Hey Mayor.
And Mayor.
Good evening.
Your Honor.
Hey, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call to order the virtual full board of Alderman meeting for August 10th, 2021. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance.
allegiance.
Amen.
Trish, can we have roll call?
Yes, Alderman King. Alderman Stowe.
Here.
Alderman Phipps.
Here.
Alderwoman Tar.
Yeah.
Alderman Cassetti.
Present.
Alderman Genetti.
Here.
Alderman Spigaro. Alderwoman Strowman.
Here.
Alderman Yalman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman Lamone.
Here.
President Schuer.
Here.
Alderman Blackwell. Alderman De Libro. Ten present, four absent.
This is Dan King. I am here. I just have a communication problem.
Eleven present, three absent.
Declare a quorum. All right, on the previous minutes, those were sent out, but I don't know that those came in time. Do you guys, they would have a chance to review the minutes from July 13th, 2021 meeting?
I did not.
You did not? We can push those to the next meeting. No worries. All right, so we'll move on to public session. Just a reminder, it's not a Q and A. Please limit any responses to three minutes or less. And please identify yourself if you choose to speak, but with your name and address for the public record. So is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight?
Yes, I would like to speak.
Yes, name and record, name and address for the public record, please.
Of course, Leonard Marazzi, 8 South Westwood Road, Ansonia. I would like to just talk to the Board of Alderman again, as I did last month pertaining to the issue that we have at 16 Riverside Drive. We spoke last month about the illegal rock crushing operation that is going on. We're now at 17 months. And it's just, it is so frustrating. I'm sure if all of you are sitting where I'm sitting for the lack of communication and transparency. I just want to read the zoning section 610. Point 5.8, which clearly states, no processing, sorting, crushing, grading, mixing, fabricating, or similar machinery shall be erected or maintained on the lot. As you all know, as I spoke last week, we're in the midst of trying to work with Burns Construction and work with the city administration on trying to get this under control. The noise, the dust, the vibration, it's just impacting our quality of life. It has severely impacted our neighborhood. And most of all, as I stated last month, you know, this was something that was opposed back in 1998, when complete construction wanted to run an illegal rock crushing operation. Complete took it to the state. The state supported the city zoning and our then zoning officer, Peter Crabtree, and did not allow it. I would certainly hope that, you know, this is the second time I'm speaking, that some member of the Board of Alderman would maybe raise a question and just ask, why is this operation continuing when it's an illegal operation? I thank you for your attention tonight, and I hope that someone in the future will look into helping us out. Thank you.
Thank you for visiting. I know you came last month. Does anyone from city staff want to update on this? Or I know that there was an update given last month after you spoke. No?
Josh?
Yes?
Just curious, is there, is there somebody that could really look into this deeper and see what's going on here and get back to us next month?
Joe Yalman and Chicago have brought this to our attention. John has been working with both the residents and the and Burns Construction and their attorney. So next, next site, next planning and zoning meeting, they will have a site plan with modifications on it.
Yeah, so the easy explanation here is, you know, we tried to set this out at the last meeting. You know, we want to state as clearly as possible, the zoning officer's interpretation is that this is not illegal rock crushing. And that there is a distinction between the processing of off-site materials that is prohibited, not allowed, and the processing of materials that is taken from the site. Materials like rocks that are taken from the actual site. So the zoning officer made that distinction and issued a permit on that basis. However, in working with the owner to try to come to some middle ground, we've gotten the owner, Burns, to come to the city essentially with language, modifying language that would clarify what's allowed and what's not, and allow it to be put before not only P and Z, but to be put before the residents to allow the residents to weigh in in front of P and Z to settle the matter once and for all. So we've been clearly stating that that's the solution. It remains the solution. And actually, I've been eagerly requesting building to give an update as to when this public hearing is going to be set. And I believe it's going to be set, if not later this month, then early September. So this is an issue that we've all had our eye on, and we're all eager to resolve for the residents. Quality of life is very important, but I think, you know, legally with the zoning officer's decision here, and he made a distinction between what was illegal and not illegal. That distinction is important, and it's one that P and Z is going to have to weigh in on, and the public can certainly weigh in on when this public hearing is scheduled, which it will be. My understanding right now, as of earlier this week, is that right now that proposed regulation submitted by Burns is being reviewed by our city planner, Dave Elder.
Thank you for the update. And thank you for coming to our meeting tonight.
If I may.
Sure.
Mr. Stewart, if I may, I just want to say again, again, I can only read what's in our zoning law, and we keep talking about excavation of materials. Again, I just want to ask everyone to take, have an opportunity to read it. It says, similar machinery, no machinery shall be erected or maintained on the lot. So the point I'm trying to make is that for 17 months, this operation has been going on. It certainly should have been stopped so that the proper permitting, planning, and all, yes, the CEO made an interpretation. He made an interpretation about excavation of material rather than processing. The point I'm making is that the zoning law clearly states, no machinery shall be erected I'm good. or maintained on the lot. And if you take a look right, you'll see there's plenty of machinery there. Thank you.
Thank you again. Are there any other?
Josh, I have a question for the, for that gentleman. Can you call off the, the, where you cited it was in the zoning law before?
Sure. It's under the heading standards and conditions. It is 610. Point 5.8. There's a whole slew of points there, including, you know, noise, debris, dust, dirt, vibration, all the things that we're suffering from. But the bottom line to me is, as I read it, it says it cannot be erected. I'm not getting into whether it's excavation or processing. Those, that equipment is not allowed on the premises. And like I said, in 2002, this, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who wishes to address the board tonight?
Well, Josh, I just had a, just a comment on what's happening. Since it seems to be prolonged, can we, as the Alderman, ask the P and Z to expedite this so that we could get this resolved? If we're waiting for P and Z to put it on their agenda to make their decision, to ensure that it's on there for their next meeting, can we, as the Board of Alderman, ask them to expedite?
I think it is on the agenda.
It is.
Is it on?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Diane. Anyone else from the public? Yes, yes. Any other Alderman who want to interrupt? Go ahead. Go Charlie.
Well, for hopefully help be helpful for next Alderman's meeting, you need to have your permit script, the description of the permit that they have now. And Mr. Elder needs to go over that with a fine tooth comb. You understand what I'm saying?
Yep.
Because that's that, there should be a complete description of that permit. If there's not, then they need to do it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Charlie. Does anyone else want to talk about this before I open it up again? All right. Is anyone else from the public who wishes to address the Board of Alderman tonight? I'm looking around. Second, second call. Is anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight? Third and final call. Anyone from the public? Hearing none. We will close the public session and move on to public official session. Mayor Cassetti.
President Schuer, members of the Board of Alderman, residents of the great city of Ansonia. I hope you and your families have been enjoying the summer. But as you know, progress takes no break here in Ansonia. So thank you for all the work you've done in the past two months to keep this city moving forward. First and foremost, I want to recognize our automatic subcommittee and our corporation council for preparing two ordinances that are up for consideration tonight. In particular, I want to mention the Landlord Accountability Act, which creates a new requirement for absentee landlords. Have their rental units regularly inspected. It also requires non-resident property owners to keep their contact information on file with the city's building department. Now, we have so many responsible property owners in our city, but there is a minority of irresponsible ones that give landlords a bad name and their tenants. Our residents are suffering because of that. If you're going to be an absentee landlord in our city, you're going to have to follow the rules. And if you intend on making money as a slumlord, well, you can take this as a hint from my administration to get the hell out of our city. I also want to recognize Mike Warhola, our acting director of arms. Mike is doing a great job and has also produced savings in the last three months. And I wanted to recognize the job he's doing for us. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, I want to point out some new projects. Earlier today, I was joined by the fifth Ward Alderman, Joe Yalman, at Chicago Rivers on Franklin Street, where we announced the first phase of the Franklin Street, or Franklin Avenue pedestrian enhancement project. If you've taken a drive up Franklin on your way to Wakeley Avenue, you'll know the sidewalks in that area are badly deteriorated. Well, over, ever since the Wakeley Avenue reconstruction project, Joe and Chicago have been very persistent to me in suggesting ways we can improve this corridor that connects Wakeley Avenue to our downtown area. Now, this new enhancement project will see 900 linear feet of new sidewalk installed on Franklin Street by, by year's end. The new sidewalk will be five foot wide. Existing driveway ramps will be replaced. And this is only the first phase of the project that will end on the complete replacement of all sidewalks on Franklin Street. Now, how about more restaurant news? I can announce that a new restaurant and micro brewery called will be coming to 540 and 560 Main Street. The plans have been submitted, the planning and zoning, and you'll be hearing more about that project soon. Finally, I want to again stress the importance of COVID-19 vaccinations. Griffin Health is partnering with the city to run clinics on 4 Fourth Street every Monday and Wednesday, and will be giving away free quasi tickets to anyone who gets their first shot at the clinic and a free $25 gift coupon certificate to Ansonia Restaurant with your second shot. And that's not all. A mobile vaccination clinic will be on site for our free outdoor movie night on Saturday, August 28th at Nolan Field. There will be a screening of The Karate Kid. I hope to see you and your family there. I also want to recognize Dawn Ossie and Jeremy Muniz Nicky for having our second Super Soak this Saturday up at the Nolan Field from 12 to 3. As you can see, we are keeping busy. Now, I don't want to keep this board here to stop the productivity, but I want to thank you for everything you've done and enjoy the summer night. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on, move to Corporation Council, John Marini.
Mr. President, thank you, members of the board. I want to welcome two new Ansonia employees, Dan Baske, our new Assistant Nature Center Director, and Jen Schuer, our new children's librarian at the Ansonia Library. Welcome aboard to both. Dan comes from his most recent stint as director of the Derby Historical Society, but of course, prior to that, he was known as Ranger Dan over at the Nature Center. So we're very happy, very happy to have him back at the Nature Center, and he is very happy to bring everything he's learned at the Derby Historical Society to our organization up at the Nature Center. And of course, Jen was a teacher at the Red Wing Pond House, and she's going to bring her educational and programming experience to the Ansonia Library. So we expect great things from both. These are two critical departments when it comes to offering services to our residents, especially to our youth, and so we look forward to having them in our fold. Next, we're finishing up with our last contract in what has been a year of contracts. It's the supervisor's contract, and we will likely have a draft for you in September for your consideration. Things are winding down. We only have a couple issues to resolve. Additionally, I want to report back on the Opera House lease. As you know, we're negotiating with multiple family members here, but the reception has been very good so far. And actually, again, I'm looking to take a finalized draft back to you in September for consideration and approval. We're very excited to be underway with the conjurskis and the possibility of revitalizing the Ansonia Opera House. Now, as the mayor mentioned, two ordinances are on tonight for consideration. Want to thank the ordinance committee for taking time during the summer to really fine tune these with respect to that tenants and landlord ordinance, very important for us. As you know, I've worked a bit with our building department, Ron Di Perini, Dave Blackwell, Kelly and company. And of course, we've had a lot of issues when it comes to landlords, especially absentee landlords. There are a lot of good property owners out there, but there are a good, a good, strong minority causing trouble for everyone. And every time we relocate due to an unsafe, unsanitary condition, you know, we're basically thinking of ways to prevent it in the future. And that's this ordinance, this law is the answer to that, to hold especially absentee landlords accountable, to have them put communication on file with us so we know where to find them when things go wrong, so we know who their tenants are when we're trying to locate them in the midst of an emergency. And of course, to get regular inspections, a part of what we do here in Ansonia, that's done throughout the state, but it's never been done here in Ansonia. Regular inspection of rental units to make sure they're up to code, that they're safe and have inhabitable. Landlords are, of course, like any other business, business, and there are business regulations that need to be followed for the safety of customers. And here, you know, landlords are in the business of really protecting people's lives, keeping people's lives safe. And so the, the ability to run regular inspections and to make your ability to be a landlord contingent on a health and safety inspection, that is paramount for us. So I look forward to talking with you about that later tonight, and I'm certainly happy to take any questions now.
Are there any questions for Corporation Council from the Alderman tonight? All right, moving on. Economic Development Director Sheila O'Malley.
All right, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board of Alderman. A few updates for you. Finally, our asbestos contractor is on site at SHW and beginning work, beginning some of the abatement work to pave the way for EPA to get on that site, 34, 35 North Main Street. Obviously, you've seen, you've seen our contractor Colina Concrete and Paving out on East Main Street. They are clearing and grubbing the sides where the sidewalk's going to be laid out, and they will be posting signage shortly. The Riverwalk is nearly complete, actually, in a very short period of time. The only holdup we have is that there are some things that have been, that are backordered because we're having difficulty getting supplies. The railings have to go up and the benches as well, and we're just waiting on those. We'll put those in, install those in, and the lighthouse, and the lights, and then the path will be paved again. So that is due to be complete shortly. There is another opportunity for a new Riverwalk grant application for construction of another segment. And, and that actually presents an opportunity to regionalize with Seymour on a potential application. Saw some bids go out recently, one being the Nature Center re-roofing project. Got a good bid on that and hopefully going to be awarding that, bring it to you, you folks to approve, but awarding that bid on the Nature Center for the re-roofing. In addition to that fancy, your friends of the Ansonia Nature Center has raised about $64,000 in, in funds for some, some improvements to the Nature Center, improving the herpetarium, I think I'm saying that right, which, which houses the turtles and snakes, going to, going to make that more easily accessible for children. We're going to put an enclosure and an addition on so that they can prep, the employees can prep food and, and feed the reptiles while the children, you know, as the children get a chance to take a look at it. And then some ADA accessibility issues being addressed as well with that $64,000. So Allison, I'm sure is quite pleased, but getting some things done at the Nature Center. Reval bid, we will talk about a little bit later, and I think that's it for now.
Great, thank you. Any questions for economic development tonight from the Alderman?
Hey Sheila, it's Tony. I have a question. The joint venture with Seymour for the extension of another Riverwalk piece, is that something that we would join with them on? Are they on board already kind of thing? Like what has to happen next with that?
Yeah, we've spoken to first select woman, Anne Marie Dragonis, and she's indicated a willingness to do some plant, some planning efforts and construction to try to connect the two communities, which I think, you know, is a great idea, and it's the, it, it's actually what's intended with the, with the Riverwalk program is to connect your neighboring communities. So hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll bring you, bring you some proposals for the connection. See what you think.
Excellent. I'm eager to hear on that. That's great.
Good.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from the Alderman for economic development?
Josh, I've got a couple of questions. It's actually for, for the different officers that have spoken, and Sheila happens to be the last one, so they're not intended for Sheila, but somebody could answer them. EOC in the header of our website is the reference body that will be consulted regarding the COVID shutdowns. What is the EOC? Anybody know?
That's the Emergency Operations Center, which every municipality has an EOC and an EMD, an emergency management director. And they coordinate all of the regional operations for the city and generally run out of the police department. Jared Keon is currently our EMD. And prior to that, it was Chief, Chief Hale and Chief Coda.
So this group has always been in existence. It's essentially a roundtable of your emergency departments, the leaders of your emergency departments in the city. And typically, we had met in the past when there were, you know, a storm hit the city or an issue that caused a power outage. You know, the EOC gathers at those times. And right now, we're, we're believing that's a good roundtable to discuss COVID action plans. There's no formal process for discussing COVID. We simply want to make sure our emergency departments are involved in decisions because, number one, they're emergency departments, they're emergency responders, and also their departments tend to be on the front lines of COVID. When COVID really hit last year, we saw those departments the most affected. So for multiple reasons, we think that's the most appropriate sounding board. We don't want to make decisions regarding COVID and reopening. Number one, we don't want to make them lightly, but we also don't want to make them in a vacuum. We want to have a good sounding board.
Maybe Lieutenant Lynch want to comment on that or add to it? I don't know. I just.
Covered pretty much everything, Sheila. It's, it's for major catastrophes. We also liaison with the utility companies, power company, gas company. They have representatives that come in so that we can address any issues with down wires and down trees, and we get immediate response so that we can get those issues fixed and the roads back open again.
Thanks.
Bill, did you have other, another question?
Yeah, yeah, my, I have my list here that wound up under my pen. I thought EOC was the Economic Opportunity Commission, so I stand corrected, and I can understand what it is now. The sidewalks that the mayor mentioned up on Franklin Street, is that a tip of an iceberg that could be beneficial to us homeowners with cracked sidewalks or? You know, the, I think the rules are right now that you and the city own your sidewalk, and if you got to fix it, you got to fix it, and the city will split some of the money with you. Now, are we starting on a different path? Because I took a walk this morning down South Cliff Street, and hallelujah, do we have some sidewalks on South Cliff Street? In fact, one guy pulled a sidewalk up, and he's grown grass with a path through it now, so. It was just a thought that came across. Can we look forward to something in that respect, or do we have just?
I think, yeah, Bill, that's a good question. The mayor's always had a plan to address the priority sidewalks, the ones that have been deteriorating for, for a number of years and have been neglected, and as in the case of Franklin Street, there's, you know, that's the entire street that's deteriorated, the entire sidewalks on both sides. We had tried to get some grant funding for South Cliff Street, and will continue to get, to secure, try to secure and look for funding for sidewalks because that's a priority throughout the city. And yeah, I mean, Franklin Street is not the only street, but just starting there.
Well, I suppose as a start, we can see where, where it goes with other people. It was just interesting that I should hear it, and it's another mixed bag in our small, lonesome town of Ansonia. You know, there's good and bad with it, but well, let's see where it goes. Line of sight at SHW. I mentioned, I mentioned Mr. Mickey one day. I was sitting at the traffic light coming down Foundry Hill, and the, I think it was our backhoe was coming out of the lot onto Main Street. And I thought for sure my wife and I were going to be the witness to an accident because he couldn't see cars coming off of North Main Street, and especially some of them to take the right turn on red. And I think there's just some action should be taken about the vines and the weeds and everything that are growing on that fence before something interesting happens with somebody saying, well, let me take a chance. And but that one day, I said, whoa, there was two cars that, you know, they played a jockey match with the backhoe because neither could see the other. So it was just an observation that I thought of when you were speaking about SHW.
So noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any other questions for economic development or anyone, I suppose, before we move on to Police Lieutenant Lynch? All right, let's move on. Lynch?
Evening, President Schuer. Good evening to the members of the board. You're going to have two communications before you tonight from the police department. One is in relation to our body worn cameras. One is in relation to our body worn cameras. Contract was signed last May, you uh the board approved the uh contract last May. Due to the police accountability bill, we need to renegotiate it uh in order to increase the number of body cameras. This is gonna give us the ability for every officer to be assigned a permanent body camera. It's gonna continue the unlimited storage and all the associated equipment. It's a it's a five-year contract, so the five-year contract will go from. The approval of your board forward. The costs are documented in there and the quote is good until the end of the month. The other communication is in regards to the disposal of an old police vehicle. A two thousand ten Ford Expedition that was used as a supervisor's vehicle. Then transitioned into a private duty and utility vehicle. It's. Long past its life and we're either going to scrap it or sell it, whichever is uh the more beneficial to the city. In regards to uh the building, uh the new building is on target. We have a hard date of October twenty-seventh for the nine-one-one cut over. Once that happens, we have to be in the building because that's where the nine-one-one calls will go. Majority of the construction is done. Uh, there's some finishing things went through and and pointed out. Some issues that need to be rectified and they're currently working on that. Employees wise, we are currently attempting to fill uh six positions that we have open. Obviously, Chief Coda's uh last official day will be uh this Friday. We had a resignation recently of one of our officers to go to the private sector. We just started a new certified officer. Uh, she's been on her own for ten days now and she seems to be working out fine. She came from Bridgeport. We have two more certified officers that we're gonna be putting before the board at a special meeting, the Board of Police Commissioners at a special meeting on Friday. So we're hoping within the next six to eight weeks to have those two officers up and running as opposed to the sixteen to eighteen months for uncertified officers. We have a third certified officer that's in backgrounds. We're hoping to finish that up and have her before the Board of Police Commissioners within the next month. And we have one uncertified candidate that we're going through background with the hope to get into the September Municipal Academy at the Meriden Police Academy. We had a uh a couple of arrests this month. Uh, we we made the last and final arrest for the two thousand nineteen shooting that happened about twelve o'clock in the afternoon up on Howard Church. And we made an arrest up on North State Street for a dispute that started where there was a a gun involved and some drugs. Officers did a very good job locating the people and recovering a weapon that ended up being stolen and some drugs. And that's all I have to report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Lieutenant Lynch from the Alderman tonight?
Yeah, um, how you doing? Um, I just wanted to be clear that this um extra sixty-something thousand is is. Another part of the unfunded mandate of the uh the police accountability.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's it's in relation to that and we'll be coming before you again probably within the next couple of months for the uh car, the uh car dash cameras. That's also something that's been uh required under the state law and uh we're gonna be implementing those also. This is just for the body worn cameras. This will allow every officer to be assigned a camera so that we don't have to worry about an officer not having the camera when they're on the road.
Okay, thank you.
Do you, do you know if there are any grants that you're currently trying to access? I know there was some federal money they were talking about.
I believe there is, there is a grant out there uh somewhere in the range of about twenty thousand dollars, but uh that process is, I'm not sure where that process is, Lieutenant Williams. It's more uh up to speed as to far as that goes.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe, did you have a question?
Yeah, Lieutenant, I wanted to, um, well, one, I wanted to ask for an update with regards to the incident that occurred over at the Pork Hollow. If you have one.
The robbery?
Uh, the, yeah, the, yeah, the robbery on Pork Hollow, right there at the corner.
Detectives are working it. They were able to uh recover some evidence and then we're trying to uh see if there, we can pull any DNA off of. That's currently being processed, hopefully to go to the state lab. Uh, we've had multiple conversations with the uh victim in the case and we're attempting to identify. One or more of the suspects so that we can make an arrest.
Okay, um, and the the second thing I wanted to, um, I I we had started a conversation. Uh, with Chief Coda with regards to uh the loud mufflers and the uh the. Well, the excessive noise that's coming out of a certain few cars is probably about a half dozen or so cars around town. Um, loud banging noises, sounds like backfire, you know, the backfiring and gunshots. Uh, I know you're familiar with the issue. Uh, we're trying to look at it at the ordinance committee level to see if there's anything that we can do to assist you. Uh, or Lieutenant Williams in your pursuit of trying to well that. Um, so we are, we are planning on having an ordinance meeting again on August twenty-fourth. I'd like to extend, it's at seven o'clock and it'll be uh virtually, I'd like to extend that invitation to either yourself or Lieutenant. Uh, Williams to come, give us your thoughts that, you know, and address sort of that issue of how, what we can do to assist. I know there's our state statute. Um, but if there's anything else, any other tools that we can um assist you with, we'd like to have that conversation, so.
Absolutely, sir. I will pass this long. Uh, at that point, that'll be uh Lieutenant Williams will be that acting chief, so I'm sure he'll be more than happy to attend the meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Lieutenant. Appreciate the time.
Any other questions for Lieutenant Lynch tonight? So, Joe, Teddy?
Yeah, through President Schuer. Uh, good evening, uh Lieutenant Lynch.
Evening, sir.
Um, I was just wondering, what is the policy for uh police concerning uh fire alarms or when a call comes in for a fire, it's usually. I don't know, either a nine-one-one or is there something that's on a panel that flashes, lets you know that a commercial building is on fire or is?
Those systems are no longer active in the Police Department. Most of our fire alarm calls comes through the alarm company, whoever they have set up. They call us, they activate the fire alarm, we pass it to Northwest for dispatch of the fire units. And we send an officer just to uh help with any traffic issues or to help with the uh evacuation of the building if it is a true structure fire.
They don't uh verify or determine whether it's a false alarm or whether it's uh active?
Well, no, as part of, as part of the call, it will be verified whether it was a false alarm or an active fire alarm and that's all documented through our CAD system.
All right, um, and the Axion five-year uh contract. Um, you're gonna replace fifty cameras in in five years or is it twenty-five after three and then another twenty-five at five?
We could, yeah, we currently have twenty-five body cameras for all of our officers. Obviously, the problem is if we have multiple officers come in. Between the cameras that are charging and the cameras that are out, we we sometimes run short. So in order to stay in compliance with the police accountability bill, we are now going to issue cameras to every officer. So every officer, when they work, will have a camera working for them. We currently have twenty-five. If the contract is approved by this board, we will add an additional twenty-five immediately. And then we'll replace half of that. The 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 current twenty-five we have will get replaced in year, um, actually, I'm sorry. All fifty body cameras in year three will be replaced and keep under warranty.
And then it goes to uh year five?
Yes.
Um, there was a mention of warranties at year five. The, well, that, it, what I'm trying to understand is is, well, there's three years for the first fifty and then not only two years for the last, uh.
Well, the warranties, the warranties go through the entire life of it. It's at year three, they're gonna replace all fifty cameras.
Okay.
So Axon is constantly developing new cameras. They're bringing out new equipment. And as that happens, they try to push the newest equipment out with the newest features and and uh they have quite a bit of um. Added things you can put on, but of course, everything is money, but the cameras themselves, they're constantly improving the cameras as far as the quality of of audio and video. And the storage and the battery life of them. So as they get new ones, they push them out and that's part of the contract.
What do you foresee for the uh dash cams?
I believe the dash cams are going to run, think, um, I don't want to, I don't want to speak, um.
No, we won't hold you to it, just uh ballpark.
The dash cams are a little less expensive because it's only about nine, I think, nine or ten cars. We have to put them in all of our marked units. Uh, that's required. Um, as far as the the unmarked cars go, anybody driving an unmarked car must have a body camera on, which is. We will have that covered, so we currently have nine marked vehicles, so. I wanna say somewhere in the ballpark of ten thousand dollars, but I don't, don't hold me to that. I don't have the numbers in front of me.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
And Lieutenant, it's Tony. Can I ask a question? So do we own those body cams or do we lease them?
We own them.
Do they have any sort of, do they have any sort of lease program where we'd be able to turn them in so many years so we're not continually buying upgraded technology?
I'll take a look at it. I'm not aware of a lease program, but we can take a look at that.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I would imagine like, I was gonna say, I was, I would imagine like cell phones, those are probably uh either upgraded or obsolete six months once you get them, so.
Um, under the current program that we have, when they send us new body cameras, they don't even ask for the old ones back. Because for them, they're obsolete and they won't even, they won't, they won't reissue them, they won't do anything with them.
What do we do with them?
We keep them as spares, but for the most part. The way the system works, you have to have the the camera registered, so we're only registered for fifty cameras. So we hold on to them just in case we have something happen where a couple of cameras go down and we can kind of switch them in and out. But my understanding is that they don't even ask for them back.
Wow, okay, thank you.
As part of the contract, excuse me, as part of the contract, they um they monitor and and keep the history of everything that goes on with the camera?
All the data storage, yes, they're they're, they provide us with unlimited cloud storage. That will show all the uh cameras, when they're used, how they're used, and also the videos that are gathered from them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Lieutenant Lynch? Charlie?
Um, I just would like to thank the uh police for coming to my uh house in a reasonable amount of time over a trespass. Um, and the other thing on a more personal level. I go, I wait, you know, every month or few months and I ask about how Kane's doing, the dog. How is he doing, Lieutenant? Has he got any busts or?
He he's doing very well. Um, we've had no major reports to to uh for him to uh respond to, but. Him and Officer Smith are out there, they're patrolling the streets and they're keeping everyone safe.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, and thank you for coming tonight, Lieutenant Lynch.
You're welcome, sir.
Uh, all right, I think that's the end of uh public official sessions, so we'll move on to committee reports.
Uh, Josh? Yeah, so I I don't see Mike DeLazio here, but I did have a comment for Public Works and.
Sure.
I don't, maybe I could lodge that to uh Sheila or the mayor or something like that, but. With all the work that's been going on, you know, inside the armory, that I've had the 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 joy of. Helping the Assumption School adopt a spot, you know, clean up their spot right behind um over there on North Main and. That corner section of the armory has so much overgrowth, there there's almost a. We'll call it a weed or a sumac kind of canopy growing over North Main, so. I was wondering if there's something um or is a plan in place or whatever that. Public Works has to clean up that section over there, trim it back, um, clean it up a bit, you know, we have adoptive spots trying to. You know, make that a little more presentable. What what's the plan for Public Works to clean it up around the armory?
Yep, we're, we have definitely been talking to Griffin. About uh coordinating with landscaping efforts on the outside of the armory and that's part of it, uh Tony. And you're also gonna see some improvements as we start to do, finally start to do the state street uh reconstruction as well, so. All of that landscaping will change and um, you know, hopefully we can keep it in check. Because it's, you're right, it's total overgrowth right now.
All right, thanks, Sheila.
Thank you, Tony. All right, um, Finance Committee report?
They all bills have found to be correct.
They all bills by Alderman Stuh, you have a second? If found to be correct, we have a second.
My second.
Second by Alderman Genetti, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, or motion passes? Um.
President Schuer, it's it's Kurt, I'm here if you want, if you have any questions.
Yeah.
Oh!
He noticed you were here.
I didn't see, yes, actually, yeah, let me give you uh an opportunity here. Um, CFO Miller, it's the stage is yours.
Oh, thank you.
We can come back to reports, no worries.
So, uh, a a quick report, I'm sure there's there's plenty of questions though. Uh, the first half of the A R P money has arrived, it needs to be deposited into a separate bank account, which we have. Uh, the first reporting date is coming up at the end of August. Uh, so we will be working through that. Again, the first half, two point seven million, we expect the second half to arrive at some point late spring of twenty twenty. Uh, as you all know, fiscal year twenty uh twenty-one has just come to an end. Um, all things considered, uh, I think the city came out in a very strong financial position. Uh, COVID certainly puts a tremendous strain on the city and its resources. Uh, we expect to have some more solid numbers uh in September. Uh, the Board of Education has a new business manager. Uh, Rick Beldon, who is going through and just kind of cleaning up all of their numbers. Uh, but in conversations with Rich, uh, we feel very strong uh that we'll finish the fiscal year. Uh, very successfully, which is, which is positive. Um, I know it seems very early, but uh we will start the budget process for fiscal year twenty-three in early September. Uh, I'm working on a timeline uh with the mayor to make sure that he is. Uh, comfortable with that, but the initial meeting in early September will be bringing in all of the department heads. Uh, to kind of discuss the due process, what their expectations are. Um, we are, plan is to have a uh a financial summit, for lack of a better term, uh in early December. Uh, where the mayor and his senior staff will sit down with uh many of the town's financial vendors. Um, and go through a lot of the soup to nuts of the finances of the city, talking about insurances, the way our money's invested. Our debt profile, so on and so forth. We're then gonna bring the department heads in and have them present their budgets to each other. Um, you know, one of the biggest things that department heads need to understand is, you know, how all of the pieces of the puzzle fit together. When they hear their peers uh kind of discuss their needs back and forth, I think it just provides some some better understanding, improves communications and so on. Uh, but we are on target to have the mayor's budget presented at your meeting in February of twenty twenty-two. Uh, so that is, that is certainly a good thing. Um. We've been working on a project to kind of clean up the city's uh health insurance, so we've been auditing. Uh, through those, looking at both existing employees as well as our retirees. Um, you know, I wanna commend, uh commend Mary Ann and Fran in the finance office who have been helping me. Uh, kind of wade through all this information, but it looks like when it's all said and done, we're gonna save the city somewhere between forty and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, which is, which is certainly a great thing. Uh, with the new budget going into uh in into effect. We're starting to review some of the initiatives that the mayor had established for the budgets, uh that being improving our technology and. Upgrading our infrastructure. Uh, so Rich and I have taken a few meetings uh over the last couple of weeks, just looking at some different uh technology options. Today, we've met with uh some folks about modernizing just the the city's faxing capabilities. Um, it'll save us some money, but more importantly, will make it uh more efficient, more effective. We're looking at some uh human resource uh tools uh that I think will better the human resource process that we have in the city. Um, and then more importantly, with the uh exceptional relationship. Uh, that the mayor and you folks have developed with the Board of Education over the last twelve to eighteen months. Uh, Rich and I will be working with uh Rick Beldon, again, the new business manager. At the Board of Ed to see where we can find efficiencies uh between each other, places where we can work together. Uh, that'll not only benefit the Board of Ed and the city, but more importantly, will benefit all of the residents. Um, as a whole, so again, we're very excited. There's a lot of uh good stuff uh coming down the line. Um, and, you know, we we expect some great things to continue happening uh over the next six months or so. So with that, uh, I'll turn it back to President Schuer and see if there are any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for um CFO Miller tonight from the Port of Alderman?
Yeah, hey Kurt, it's Tony, I got a question. So uh on that whole thing of efficiency improvements. Where are we? And again, it might be out of your purview, where are we with the um? Getting the, like, the W P C A payments automated or online? Maybe aligning them to something like in the tax system. I know we talked about that, there was some capability there. Has that, has that gotten any more traction?
Uh, it's starting to. Um, we've had some conversations uh that Rich has led between the assessor's office. Um, the. the WPCA and the tax collector's office, trying to get everything cloud-based. It's, it's certainly a process, some things that we're gonna have to work through, we need to make sure that our employees are comfortable using all of the new, the new technology. So, you know, with the WPCA, we just want to make sure that we're going through slowly, making sure that the staff there is comfortable with everything, but it's certainly something I expect to see coming in the upcoming months.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions from the Alderman, from the finance side? All right, thanks again, and sorry, sorry again for missing you.
Oh, no, not a problem.
All right, let's move back into committee reports. Let's see, there's nothing on Public Works. Anything on the Fire Commission? Alderman Cassetti?
The Fire Commission. Derek Lundin, a fire marshal, reported for June and July. I would say that for June, the department responded to 69 calls, one fire marshal investigation, and 10 inspections for the month of June. And for the month of July, there were 78 calls and two investigations that were fire structures and nine inspections. And that, that's the summation of his report.
Thank you.
Can I, can I add to Joe's report too, if it's all right with you, Joe?
Add to it, Joseph, thank you.
The Fire Department's been pretty active lately, we, we've had some structured fires. And I just wanna thank all, all the fire, all the firemen and everyone involved, the police, the ambulance, the fine job they did at these structure fires, and I think we should thank some of the other towns for coming in and helping us, like Derby, Seymour, Oxford, Orange, Woodbridge. They're all there helping us, we're all helping each other, and I, my hat goes off to all these people get up in the middle of night and go to these things, so thank you all and my hat goes off to you. Keep up the good work. You'd be lost without our volunteers and our, all our police and ambulance, everything, go out, protect the city and do a good job, so keep it up. Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
Get on.
Well said, Joe. Thank you. Um, any, let's see, ordinance, Joe, are you gonna cover that under the, when the ordinance piece comes up, or do you have any update separately?
I will, I'll cover that when the ordinance has come up, I'll just indicate that there's, we have scheduled an ordinance committee meeting, I indicated to the lieutenant, but it's August 26th at 7:00 PM, it'll be virtual.
All right, are there any committee reports that I missed?
I'll just give one briefly with temporary regional. We did have a meeting again at the beginning of this month, it was the first one we had in a while, we had a few cancellations due to scheduling issues and summer vacations and things like that, but we, we finally decided on the size of the central office, we're getting down to the nitty gritty, really getting into some of the tougher discussions. Specifically, we're going to be having the conversation at our next meeting, which is August 24th at 7:30 online, but that, that meeting will kick the conversation off about what a regional district would look like, either in a, we know it's gonna be K through 12, but whether we're, we're getting into the arguments as to whether or not it's gonna be a three elementary school or a four elementary school model, and there's, there's some financial impacts for both, both in terms of costs of running a four school district, a four elementary school district, but also any reimbursement rate that we would receive from the state, so those are things that we're gonna be considering. Yeah, and that conversation after that, we'll be having conversations about governance, and so I encourage everybody to come out. If they have any questions, if you can't make the meetings and you have questions that you want addressed, I'm, I'm happy to bring them up at the meeting. And I did want to say one other thing, you know, in terms of our superintendent. Joe, I don't know how many everybody knows, but Joe did have a medical procedure, and he's got a sort of a long path for recovery and it's, you know, on the, as the co-chair of the temporary regional, as well as the co-chair of the education subcommittee, I just ask everybody, keep in your thoughts and prayers. I did have a conversation, he's doing better, doing well, but it's a long road, so on behalf of my, you know, on us, I sent our well wishes and things like that, so just keep in your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, Joe.
Sure.
Prayers for him. Any other committee reports that I missed?
Josh.
Bill.
I've got one, hopped over ARMS committee.
Yep.
And I, I think there's arms, yeah, Mr. Warhola is here, but we all were the receipt of, recipient of a, an email that came from an ARMS family member, can I say, regarding one of the ARMS people that was supposedly fired and for COVID and all kinds of, it was an uncomfortable read, but it went out to everybody, so I'm sure you all saw it, and I was wondering if there is any follow-up to this or but what's going on, because it sounded very unpleasant.
I guess I would ask the question of John, because this is a personnel matter.
Yeah, I could opine on that, and I, I saw that letter as well. You know, this is a position at ARMS called scheduler, that was a position that was added about maybe three, three and a half years ago. When the unionization occurred, it was agreed by all parties, the city and the union, that this scheduler position would be eliminated. Because if it was not eliminated, it would be, be by necessity incorporated into the union. And to understand a little bit about what this position is, it essentially took a function that the supervisors were responsible for and turned it into a part-time position on its own. A part-time position that I believe paid about $25,000 to $30,000 a year. And so, given that we didn't want to enshrine that as a union position, the decision was made way back when, back over a year and a half ago, when ARMS negotiations started with the union, that it would eventually be phased out entirely. The position actually stayed with us for, for longer than expected. But given the department's needs, as articulated by our, our acting director, Mike Warhola, the need was to have supervisors that could do scheduling and man the trucks and do the emergency services. And so it was decided that the time was right to phase that position out. However, I can say that Mike has extended that particular individual with the opportunity to come on as a part-time EMT. If they're able to. That individual does hold a full-time position at the Ansonia Police Department. But, you know, certainly it's someone who is very valuable to the organization, very appreciated all her time and service, and, and there certainly is a path forward to stay with the organization if she has time to serve as a regular EMT. But it was an operational decision, it was certainly not a COVID or budget-inspired or budget cut. But it was budgetary to the extent that, you know, the, the money is better used on supervisors who can cover more territory. And it was a phase out that always, I, I think everyone knew had to happen, given the unionization and the discussions we originally had with the, with the paramedics and, and EMTs' union back over a year and a half ago.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other, I'm looking here at the list, anything, any other updates, committee reports from the Alderman?
I'm Josh.
Yes.
Referenced that email as well, it referenced something about, it seemed like, it seemed like it was a time lag. Can someone just speak on that? Is that, as a decision? Is there gonna be a problem with the decision that was made with the level of service that our residents are gonna be receiving?
It was 12 minutes. I think that call was 12.
You're referring to the, the message.
It'll sound like they were complaining about a time lag. I don't know what the regular time is that normally happens.
Yeah, I would have to check with, with ARMS selves, you know, on that specific issue.
Yeah, I just, I'd be curious on
Okay.
whether or not that was a problem.
Anything else in this section? All right, so we'll move into municipal reports. First up, vote recommendations and comptroller approvals. Those were in your packet for the August 2nd boat meeting. Anyone?
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept by Alderman Cassetti.
Very second.
Mamon, all in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion passes, accept that report. Land use report? Move my papers here. This report, the, for the month of July 2021.
Make a motion.
Motion to accept by Alderman Rivers.
Second.
Second by Alderman Tar, all in favor? Opposed? Stained? Motion passed unanimously. Just note that the revenue for July, July only, was $30,919.16, so they continue to do a good job bringing in, bringing in the greenbacks, thank you. Let's see. Tax collector report and the request for refunds, the request for refunds was in the amount of $4,361.86. Motion to approve by Alderman Stowe.
Second.
Second by Alderman Rivers, all in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion passes, thank you. Accents and claims, we have one claim, number 01-20974. Ashley Doi versus City of Ansonia, BOE Need School and Prendergrass School. Motion to refer to counsel.
Second.
Motion to refer to counsel Alderman Yaman, second by Alderman, Alderwoman Tar, all in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, refer that to Corporation Counsel. We have four communications, I'll take these in order. Communication one is from John Tar, President of the Board of Police Commission. This was requesting an ordinance to fully ban any type of commercial recreational sales or grow facilities within the city. What do you guys want to do with this?
Joe? I mean, I guess, at this point, I'd like to make a motion to accept the correspondence. I think we should confer with counsel on planning and zoning to see if planning and zoning wants to take a look at any sort of regulations on this before it goes to the ordinance committee.
Make, make an emotion to accept the communication and refer to P and Z in consultation with Corporation.
With counsel, yes.
All right, motion by Yaman, second by Rivers. Any discussion on this? All right, all in favor of doing that?
Aye. Aye.
Any abstentions?
I'll abstain.
One abstention, Tar. All right, communication two. Lieutenant Lynch talked about this in his update, this is the request to, to kind of move the goalpost a little bit on the, the contract that we approved last year, the five-year contract, and this was, and you can see in all bold that it, it's a direct result of Police Accountability Act excess costs, specifically the body cameras. And the total cost for the five-year contract is $257,120.30. With the, the additional is, let's see, the additional amount is $64,142.85. And that's as a result of, of the body cameras. So do we have a motion to accept or approve this?
So I have, I want to make the motion to accept the communication, and do you need a separate motion to, to complete the contract? Or can I do it all in one?
I think we can do it in one.
All right, so I make a motion to accept the contract, accept the communication to complete the contract as well as from a financial aspect, monitor, I don't know if it's a separate line item in the budget or something along those lines, to track the expense specifically attributed to the Police Accountability Bill.
Second.
Motion by Mamon, second by Stowe.
Point of discussion?
Yes, any discussion on this?
I, I would just, I know that there has been a lot of discussion about this, and, you know, this is just one, another unfunded mandate that is being pushed upon us from Hartford, so I guess my, my question is, and I, and I would put this back on Tony to see if he would amend, but I'd like to include a letter that go out to our legislators to asking them to please describe for us the avenues by which we can seek reimbursement for the $64,000 that we're now spending more on.
I accept that amendment.
I have a comment too, if we could also add, if we could also add something that if we do receive reimbursement, it obviously goes back to the city. If we receive any grants, if the police department receives any grants.
We're specific to this, you're talking.
Specific to this, yes.
To offset this cost, yeah, that's expected.
Any other comments? Alderman Stowe, did you have something?
I just, you know, I, I understand exactly the mandate and I, and if anybody believes in freedom, it's definitely me. However, we need to be able to, under the circumstances of how the world is changing, we need to protect our policemen. We need them, I, you know, I'm sure other people that were hearing this or this weekend, they were saying that not only have we had the crisis that we've been hearing for months, but we're also having more suicides or talk of suicides with our policemen. I don't know why that is, and it, it really doesn't pertain, but we, we, we need, we need to be able to have our police force feel secure. We need, when we need new recruits, which we're, we're desperately, I, in my opinion, just seeking recruits all the time. We need them to feel like they're protected, you know, we're getting ready to open up a brand-new police station, which, you know, how does this measure up? It's just a tool that they need, just like the station, just like anything else needing a dog. You know, they, they need that, and, and we need to be able to rely on them. We need to show that respectfully too. I don't think it's a good idea to nitpick at, at this man, being a mandate, you know, what goes on in Hartford is irrelevant to what we're talking about here.
That's how it was, I, I agree with you, Charlie, 100%, my, my point more is, is about the financial reimbursement and being told that there's financial reimbursements here. Rather than not, not, not arguing the substantive aspects of the bill at all, so simply mentioning the fact that our costs have gone up by $64,142.85. And I'd like to know if Hartford has any possibilities for us being reimbursed for that. And I'd like a letter to go to our state representative and our state senator asking that question.
Any other discussion on this?
President, sure, if I could, to answer Alderman Mamon's point, we will be keeping this separate, so we'll count for it separate. The initial projections during the budget process had this upwards of 80,000. So again, having this number come in more in the mid-50s is a positive thing. Lieutenant Williams and I have been discussing how we could repurpose that additional funds potentially to start to address the police camera issue. So again, to, you know, his credit, Lieutenant Lynch's credit, they're looking to try to accommodate all of these unfunded mandates, for lack of a better term, but do it in a way that's budget-neutral to the police department budget. So it's certainly very commendable of those two, the efforts that they're putting in to try to get this done and, you know, to Alderman Stowe's point, to keep our officers as safe as we possibly can and provide them the, the best equipment that we're able to.
Yeah, I think, I think it adds pressure to the police department to have to figure out how to keep things budget-neutral and do their job and keep up with the mandates that are unfunded. So, good point, Joe.
So Trish, can you Frankenstein all that in together into our official?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Are we ready for a vote on this?
Do you want me to try and read it back?
Yeah, sure.
All right, Alderman Mamon moved to accept the communication and approve the contract and monitor the expenses specifically attributed to the Police Accountability Bill. And further include a letter to legislators to see how we could accept reimbursement for the expenses. And further include a letter to legislators to see how we could accept reimbursement for the expenses. Research if there are any grants to make sure that it goes back to the city and protect our policemen in the process of the whole thing. Is that about right?
That might be the greatest single motion ever made. Perfect. And exactly what came out of his mouth. Alright, yeah, absolutely. Good. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Alright, motion passes. Congratulations. Thank you. Alright, communication three also from the police department from from Wayne Williams. And this is requesting, and this was also mentioned by Lieutenant Lynch. This is the request to offload the two thousand ten Ford Expedition, which is essentially useless and they're willing to do it through whatever is the most beneficial, whether it's scrapping it or, or sale.
Make that motion.
Motion by Rivers. Second by Tar. All in favor?
Hang on a minute. Discussion?
Oh, yeah. Discussion first, yep.
I just got just a simple question. When the motor vehicle or a vehicle in this case gets transferred from our police because it's no good and, and it goes to sale, is it, you know, is that going to be able to be registered again? Or, you know, what kind of liability? Mr. Marine, you here?
Yep.
Just real quick, what kind of liability, does it have any liability at all to us if somebody buys that and tries to drive it?
If, after the sale?
Yes.
No.
Um, I mean, that's the sort of, you know, dealt with in the terms of the sale. I guess the answer is always it depends on the situation.
I just, the way things are these days, I, I hate to see something stupid. You know, somebody go down the road and ram into something and trying to blame us because the brakes weren't good enough. Even, even though they were told the brakes weren't good. You know, that kind of thing. You know, that worries me.
So I, I have a question. If it's sold, what happens to the proceeds? Can we apply those towards the capital budget for the police cruisers that we, we replace periodically?
President, sure, if I could. You know, the mayor again has had a big push about updating our infrastructure, our capital. So we changed the way that we're purchasing police cars. We're no longer purchasing them essentially just in cash. We're using lease purchase options. So this year, while we had planned to purchase one vehicle, we're actually able to purchase two. And we're closing the additional gap by using funds from previous vehicles that had been sold. So I've been working with Lieutenant Williams and Lieutenant Lynch to do that. Again, when a police car to Alderman Stowe's point, when we're done with it, it's kind of beaten up and we really don't want to be passing that on to to other departments. We have a special line now in the budget in the capital where we could, we, we could do that. So the goal is going to be to purchase through the budget. Two police cars, one year, one the next, two, one, two, one, and so on. So built into the budget, we'll be getting three new cars every two years. And then with any surplus funds or found money like this, we would try to purchase additional cars if possible.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Nice job.
Any other questions? Charlie, does that answer your concern?
No, I think, I think Charlie was trying to say, but I, if I'm not mistaking, when you sell a car, it is as it. So you're off the hook. Either way, so they could do whatever they want to do.
Is that true, John?
Yeah, that's the idea. That goes for all used car sales. Obviously, we're not going to disclose something about it that's not true. And we're going to sell it as is. And, you know, of course, subject to, you know, the, the best inspection that, that we have. But it's always, you know, buyer beware with, with used vehicles. No one can be absolutely certain. You know, just to a reasonable degree of, of understanding. If we know there's a problem, we'll disclose it.
Yeah. As is.
Yeah.
Okay.
All sales final. Alright.
Could I, I ask a question?
Sure go. Joe?
Yeah, who actually sells it?
Supposed to auction.
We, it could be at an auction for all we know.
The, the letter says vehicle sold through the property room or scrapped for parts. I'm guessing that's the standard procedure on discarded vehicles, correct?
The tenant. We, we have a contract with a company called Property Room. We have property that's been turned over to us. We have an agreement. They sell it. So the car would go to them and they'd be responsible for the resale of the car.
Alright.
I really believe that this car is most likely going to be scrapped based on the condition it's in. We, we just wanted to have both, just to cover both bases in case there was a situation where selling it would be more beneficial to the department of the city.
Charlie, I know where you can get a cheap
Thank you.
two thousand and Ford Expedition, if you're interested. Real cheap, as is though, bro.
Joe, do you need tires?
Yeah. And, uh,
Yeah, yeah.
Then he has tires. Refresh. Alright, any other comments on this? We have a, we have a motion in a second already. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you again. Motion passes. The last communication, communication four is from our town clerk, Beth Lynch. And I believe ties in with resolution one as well, right?
Correct.
Yeah. You want to speak to that quickly as far as?
Yeah, I, I think the letter explains it. It's just an additional service we're offering to people. There's no cost to the city for it. We have a lot of out of state and out of town residents who have to, if they need a vital record, have to send in a letter and it just, it's just going to, a shortcut to the process. So it's because it's not going to cost us anything. It's, I think.
And I'll note in your letter, you stated that it's gone through the finance department.
Yeah, Kim reviewed the contract and I believe Kurt also saw it.
And Derby also has recently gone the same direction as well.
Yeah, and they've, they went live with it and are very satisfied with the company. It's a one-year agreement, so.
Right. Do we have a motion to accept this?
I have a question.
Oh, sure. Well, let's, let's, do we have a motion to accept it? And then we can?
Yeah, I, yeah, you got a motion from me.
Okay, Rivers, second by Strowman. Alright, discussion. Go ahead, Tony.
Beth, so is this only for out of state residents or is this something in-state residents could do and we could potentially leverage this to cut down on maybe foot traffic in City Hall?
Oh, yes. It's for anyone. And they can even make the request and then come in and pick it up. It's just, it's, it's just a cut step in the process.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Can I just ask one question? I think I know the answer to this, Beth. I just want to confirm. You're still doing all the processing. They're just collecting the data, sending it to you, the request. You're actually doing the execution of any of the vitals, vital documents.
Yeah, we can only, you know, they can't leave, go to anyone else. It has to come from our office. Yeah.
Okay.
It's just to speed up the process, actually.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions?
How much will it cost?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Bro.
It, it won't cost the city anything. The, the, the customers are going to pay the fee if they want to use this service.
So it's going to generate some income?
Well, we, it's twenty dollars for a certified copy of any vital record. We'll, we'll still get the twenty dollars and then they'll tack on any fees if people choose to pay them.
Good idea, Beth.
They keep the fee though, correct?
They keep the fee, yeah. They just, they'll send us a monthly payment of, of the revenue from all the records.
This goes hand in hand with our technology push and trying to make the operation more efficient. So this is a, a great thing that.
Yeah, so, so, so if we can get, if we get W P C A online, because that's the only thing I have to write a check for.
Housing authority, bro.
Oh, yeah.
So, hey Kurt, so for, for this, are we going to have a like revenue in a rear position where, you know, we're, we're revenues we normally would collect in the current month? We're now going to be collecting them in the next month? And do we have any sort of, you know, book and true up or are we just going to book it as it's received?
That's a question I'm going to have to check with Rich and Ken to see how they would prefer to do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kim mentioned that it would be the same as the process that Public Works is using.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know what that process is.
Yeah, I don't either. But that's what she said, so.
Chicago, you had made the motion. Can we make the motion to be, to accept the communication and to approve the resolution? Do it all? Yep, yep. Alright, and we have a motion in a second. Any other questions on this? Motion to accept communication and approve the resolution. All in favor?
I.
Opposed?
I.
One, one opposed?
I think that was a late I.
Alright, okay. A lagging I.
Yeah.
Abstentions? Alright, motion passed unanimously. Congratulations and thanks.
Thank you.
We have no resignations this month. We have no appointments proposed. And so we'll move on to ordinance. We have two ordinances which were mentioned in the, the original opening remarks. City of Ansonia ordinance, the tobacco ordinance and the landlord accountability. So assuming John and Joe, Joe is our chair and corporation counsel handle this. So we'll go with number one, City of Ansonia ordinance, tobacco and marijuana free in recreational areas.
Yes, so the, just to be clear, everyone, the, the newest one is the, is the version that was sent to everybody today at noon. So just so everybody's on the same page and looking at the same document. I believe this is version two. There was a couple of edits after the subcommittee meeting where we changed, I think we took out one paragraph and may have changed one other thing. But essentially what this is, this is an add-on to an existing ordinance. The ordinance, ordinance already exists with regards to tobacco at the schools and the recreational facilities throughout the city. This is simply adding marijuana there. And there's language in there that talks about the health effects of marijuana, justifying its ban in those public arenas. So I would ask for everybody's support. I don't know if, Diane, if you have anything you want to add, Dan or Joe or John, but I, I think that pretty much sums it up.
No, you've, you've said it.
Very good.
Motion.
Motion to approve by?
I, I've got a question, Josh.
Oh, sure.
The, I can't find the specific ordinance, but the parking lots of the various recreational areas, they're part of the restricted area for smoking. Is that correct?
I believe it is in the definition section, Bill.
Yeah, I thought it was down, more down toward the like I or something.
Yeah.
Can't find it on my computer here. And, and then there was a reference made in that same vein, maybe in the same paragraph that was there supposed to be, was there going to be a place reserved and for the smokers on site? I, it was just a little vague, you know, and something about maintenance of the site.
There, there is not. There is not in the current ordinance, anything reserved or any smoking areas at the city parks or recreation areas or schools. And we don't intend to include that for the smoking of marijuana at any of those places.
There, there, and there's a definition of recreational property, meaning any public park property owned by the city and used for the purposes of public recreation. That would be interpreted to mean the parking lots unless the board, you know, wants to say otherwise. But, and I, and I follow Joe's comments, there are no plans right now to have a designated smoking area for tobacco or marijuana. Of course, that could change. You know, if this board would like to designate those spots, we certainly can. I think the big concern here was the interaction of tobacco and marijuana with sports and youth recreation, that those were not a good mix, given the facts that we recited within the ordinance. And it's certainly not to say, you know, that lawful activities, you know, aren't being condoned. It's simply saying, in, in this case, they're a bad mix with youth, with youth sports and youth activities.
And I would even go further than that. I think this is just a quality of life issue for all residents. All residents should be able to enjoy these, these properties without having to worry about whether or not, you know, there's, they're going to be affected by secondhand smoke or marijuana smoke. And that's really what it is. It's for the use of all residents. I mean, they can go smoke on the street, Bill.
So, so can I just say that what Bill was referring to, I just lost it. There is a section here. It says posting by the city park and recreation department, number E, towards the bottom.
Yeah, that's the posting of the sign, I believe, Diane, right?
Right. And it does say, and there shall be distinctly marked designated smoking areas. Though nothing in this section should obligate the city of Ansonia to maintain a smoking area at any recreational or school property. So it sounds like they're saying if there is one, it will be distinctly marked, but not necessarily we're going to have one. That's how I'm reading that.
Right. Yeah, exactly. So as I'm saying, this board can decide to mark those out if it would like. At this point, there is none.
Any other comments on this or, or question? Alderman, fits the, the, the area that they referenced was C two is, is where the recreational property is mentioned. Any other comments or questions or concerns? You guys want to do with this?
I think Chicago made a motion.
Yeah, I made a motion already.
Motion to approve by Alderman Rivers. Do we have a second?
I'll second if it's nobody else.
Second by Alderman Yamman. All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks for your work on that. Ordinance number two, City of Ansonia ordinance. This is the Landlord Accountability Act mentioned by the mayor in his opening speech. And I'll leave it to you guys again to walk through it.
Alright, I'll give a brief overview and John, you can chime in at any time. This is something we had worked on for a few months. This is, I believe, the third draft of this. And again, this, I'm referring to the most recent draft that everybody received probably around noon, eleven thirty noon today. Essentially what this does is this puts on landlords, the requirement to register with the city absentee landlords with the, with the exceptions that are laid out in eighteen two E. And register, oh, excuse me, the exceptions that are laid out in the section after that, I believe. But there were registration requirements for each of these landlords to not only register their address, their contact information and email address, but also the tenants that are currently living at the property and a listing of all the motor vehicles kept at the property for purposes of allowing the city or any other emergency services to be able to get in touch with the landlord. Because as we have all heard over the last several months, that is sometimes very difficult to get a hold of absentee landlords and have them address a lot of the issues that are going on in the property. That's the first part. One of the changes that we made, and I'll just, I'll, I'll bring this. Originally, there was the thought of some sort of administrative fee being applied to that. That was removed simply because the registration of this information should not be punitive. We want to encourage people to do it. We did make a punitive penalty for failure to do so, however. So there would be no cost for doing this. On the other hand, there is the second part of it, which is the, the certificate program and the rental certificate program, which requires an inspection and a schedule. Every I'm missing it. Every two years, I believe, is, is the reinspection or every, every time the property is rented and somebody to go out there and there's a fee for the initial certificate of compliance and then a hundred dollar fee thereafter. And the exceptions there are in, excuse me, eighteen three B. That's what I was looking for earlier, which excludes legal two families that are owner occupied, legal three families that are owner occupied, and then the other three exceptions that are there. But this basically is targeting the absentee landlords that are, for all intensive purposes, running properties that are not being kept up, that are not being addressed. They're running, they're being dilapidated. And the overall idea behind this is basically quality of life, once again, for our residents. If they're renting a property in the city of Ansonia, they should be getting a quality apartment and they should not have to be worrying about whether or not their landlord is going to do the upkeep and take care of things and make their, make sure them and their family are safe in their house. So.
I mean, think about it this way. Business needs a C O to operate, right? And we know that a business, anyone can walk in and make sure things are going okay. You know, restaurants get quality inspections all the time. And if you walk into a restaurant, you can tell if something's wrong. But if you're a landlord, you know, how, how does the city know?
But if you're a landlord, you know, how, how does the city know that things are okay? You know, we have to rely on the reporting coming from the tenants. And the transparency really isn't there. A restaurant's making food, a landlord is taking care of really someone's life, right? Someone's living there. And yet we're discovering that while most property owners are doing a great job, they're accountable, they're responsible, there's a minority that are not. We're opening up the door and we're finding horrible situations. We're finding unlivable situations. And again, it's a minority. But I think one or two is more than enough. And it's more than one or two. So this allows the transparency to become better, right? To improve that transparency, to allow inspections to occur. We're targeting on a biannual basis to allow our regulators to take a look and make sure that your CO, you know, is justified, that you're renting out a safe, livable space to your tenants. And that's what this ordinance does, or package of ordinances. I mean, the new provisions are putting your information on file and updating it. And a certificate, a certificate that is contingent on an inspection. And it's no more than what a lot of other towns are doing with regular inspections. We believe we can do it in an effective way with our existing staff if we do it in probably a biannual basis. It's something that I think goes a long way towards quality of life for our tenant population. And Joe really hit on that, you know, it's a quality of life issue here. You know, we want to make sure that our tenants aren't being overlooked. They're a valuable part of our community and they deserve to live in clean, safe space.
I would, Joe, I would add that it also targets illegal residences also.
Thanks, Joe.
May I ask a question?
Can I ask a question? Because I had a, I had a tenant over here that I did have a problem trying to track down the owner of a piece of property. Because there was a whole lot of things that was happening over there and it was not very well kept. And I think that this is going to put them not a whole lot of them, but the slum lords, okay, you know, on notice. Because it is just not right that these people are paying top dollar and they're getting crap. So.
Yeah, in crafting this, I talked a lot to both Joe and Chicago and some of the issues they were seeing. This requirement to put your contact information isn't just helpful for the tenants. It's also helpful for other situations like blight. We have a lot of situations in town, especially unfortunately with absentee owners, where there are blighted conditions that are affecting now not just the tenants, but the entire street, right? The entire neighborhood. And we have no idea how to locate the owner. It takes us a good deal of effort and time to even find out who this owner is and to stay in regular contact with them to work through the issues. So this will upfront make it necessary for that owner, if they're doing business, right? They're doing business here in Ansonia. Put us on notice of who you are, where are you, what is your email? Now, the basics. So if you have a horrible mess in your front yard, whether it's caused by the owner or the tenant, right? We can contact the owner to us so they can assert some responsibility. They can show some responsibility to clean up their home. So this is a law that's not just going to affect the tenants, but has an effect throughout the entire neighborhood when it comes to conditions of properties.
So can I ask, Tony, can I ask a question? So do we have a, I think more of a, like a defined and a sustainable process within City Hall to make this happen? Like, I know it's all listed here. It talks about, you know, what needs to happen, what's going to be maintained. Do we have a a process in which we're going to maintain this and monitor it? And where does that fall?
Implementation is going to fall mainly with the building department, working out a schedule that works. Obviously, it doesn't make sense to adapt a schedule that's too ambitious. They're going to have to create an inspection schedule that works with the staff that we have. We believe biannual is likely where we're heading. To make things clear, there will be checklists established, new forms established. But a lot of it, you know, we're putting that responsibility on the landlords to make the appointments, to use the forms and report. In terms of tracking, it's really the assessor's office that's going to come in handy helping. And it's actually our revaluation process that's going to give us a lot of the support that we need to identify the multifamilies that may not even be on our radar right now. And our assessor's office and Assessor David Graybosh can tell you a lot about how unreliable some of the information we currently have is. And how we're looking to a, the new revaluation process to really get some reliable data in terms of the multifamilies that are out there. And that's going to generate a list that our building department will be working off of in terms of sending out forms and notices to implement this program. So I'd say that implementation is mainly with building, but assessor is going to play a big role in that, especially with the information they're going to extract during the revaluation process next year.
I'll just, I'll add to that, Tony. That's one of the things that we changed in this newer version was pushing it back an extra thirty days. It was originally a thirty day implementation time. We pushed it back to sixty to make sure staff had the appropriate amount of time to get ready for this and implement those processes.
Okay. And John, does that talk to the, I believe, the RFP that's going out or was going out for the revale that we, I think, approved last month? Where we're going to
Yeah, not coordinated to be this way, but it is related because the selection of a company to do the revaluation is critical. We want to make sure that our data is reliable. We don't, I mean, mainly, of course, we don't want to lose revenue. We want to make sure we're properly valuing the properties that are out there. And that takes a company that's going to do their due diligence to make sure they're actually accurately reporting back to us. So, so that is tonight, later tonight, the selection of that company is pretty vital, not just for that reason, but also for this reason. The proper generation of a list of multifamilies is going to flow from that.
And I'll just chime in again, Tony, that's one of the other reasons we, if you look in eighteen three B in terms of the scope, that's one of the reasons we added the language that says legal two family and legal three family for that exact reason. Is that if you, you know, if you have an owner occupied legal two family and you're renting out the other unit, that's fine, but you can't have a, most of the multifamily houses in town are two family houses. So if you're renting it to two different units in a two family house, that's not a legal three family dwelling. So at that point in time, you actually fall outside of the scope of these exceptions here. And you can be, you can be assessed with these types of things. So.
Yeah, if you're illegal, you're illegal, period. If you, if you're not. So, I mean, that's, that's beyond this ordinance. Yet accurate data, that's going to lead us to discover those illegal apartments. And that's going to allow us to crack down on those situations.
I've got a couple of questions, if I may.
Sure.
The, I think I read in the body of the new ordinance that the Court of Appeal for anybody who feels they're being not treated well is the zoning board of appeals. Did I read that right?
That's right. I used an existing body as the appeals board, so we didn't have to create a new one just for this ordinance.
I was just wondering if that is an accurate board to use. ZBA seem to be, you know, they're pretty rigid in what they can do and what they should do. And I don't know, you might be right, John. It might be something that, you know, we have to go with because we don't want to create another monster. But it was just a comment. And the other thing that I was wondering, would this ordinance apply to like the new apartments that they're building downtown?
Of course it would. Absentee owner, multiple rentals, exactly.
So he's got to supply a name of every, every tenant and pay a biannual fee to have the certificates verified?
Yep, that's correct.
It'd be a lot of bucks, a lot of work.
Well, it's not, it's for one, it's not necessarily for every single apartment. It's for the, you know, the overall unit. So, you know, we didn't want it to be cost prohibitive. We've seen other towns that really try to turn this into a revenue generator. And that's not the intention here. The intention is to get accurate information on file for safety purposes and to get those inspections happening. Because again, when inspections aren't being performed, we see the result, right? But the intention here is not to make this a revenue generator. The charge isn't by unit. It's going to be by building. That's the way it will be implemented and applied. But yes, those multi-unit projects are, of course, are covered under this.
And just another thing that came to mind when you mentioned the value of the assessor and what they accomplished and what we hope they can accomplish out there in the field. I happen to want to refer to that Willow Street issue we had a couple of months ago with the large blight fee that they wanted relief on. It's a two-family house, you know, it's a, it looks like a duplex ranch house. But I noticed on this field card or the summary card that it's counted as a four-family house. You know, and I, whoa, timeout, you know, how did that even get to be? And it was just very confusing.
Yeah, that's commonly, that's a common, common question that's brought up. What it's listed on on the card is not necessarily what it is for zoning purposes at all. And there's a lot of case law in Connecticut out there on that very point backing me up here. Just because it says you have a six-family house, doesn't mean you're zoned for a six-family house. And it doesn't mean you can use it as a six-family house. You may be in a two-family zone, period. So, you know, it's nice to have everything, it's nice not to have those inconsistencies out there, but know that they do happen. And it is of no legal significance that the card is wrong. The card can say anything. What it's zoned as is the law, and that will dictate how the property should be used.
As long as, I was saying, as long as somebody doesn't try to head run and say there before zoning or something, you know, and
They always do. And all the, all the variances that they cite to the card, that's always one of their main arguments. But that argument holds no water. And there's plenty of case law to show that, you know, that it's not a valid argument.
Right. Would that card then be changed with this next reevaluation?
Yes. I mean, again, accurate data, the more accurate the data is, and that depends on the legwork of the valuation company, the more accurate the data is, the less confusion there is about these things.
Right. Okay, thanks.
I would just ask for, I would ask for support for this motion. I, we did, we put some hard work on this and so.
Joe, you already got the motion and you got the second. All we need to do is vote.
Are we good on this one, too? We got a motion in a second?
Yes.
I don't have a motion in a second.
I didn't think anyone made a motion on this.
No, nobody has moved yet. I'm with Chicago. You have a motion and a second.
All right, then I'll motion. Okay, you got my motion, okay.
And a second by?
Stroman.
Stroman.
Diane.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Our motion passes. And I just want to say, I'm not a member of the ordinance committee, but I do sit in on those meetings. And that, that subcommittee does a lot of work and a lot of discussion. So thank you to the members. Yaman, Cassetti, Stroman. That may be it. And, and of course, Corporation Counsel as well. But there's a lot of, lot of work put in on those. So thank you, guys, all for that.
Cheers to that committee.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on, we have one item in our new business already kind of hinted at, the revale bid for tax assessor discussion and possible action. Do you want to handle that?
Yeah, sure. We received two bids. One from Equality and the other was from Muni Services. I hope I got that, got that right. They were both similar in in amounts, but there's so much to the bits. And it mainly rides with the assessor. And the assessor has pointed out that he would prefer to select Equality Valuation Services. Mainly because they have a, they also provide a software program for City Hall that we use. And so there's already a bridge there, which would make it, which would make it easier and seamless. And for that and about twenty other reasons, he's asked that you accept the bid for Equality Valuation Services in the amount of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I don't know if John wants to to add anything to that or.
I mean, I'll add that, you know, in the past, our data has not been as accurate as we would like. And so, you know, we do believe it's in the best interest of the city to go with a company that we believe can improve the accuracy of the data.
Can I ask a question? And just, just remind, I know we went back out to bid because we only had our current provider, right? Who is our current provider? One of these two?
The, the people that provided the revale services last time is Municipal Valuation Services, and they did bid again along with Equality.
Okay, all right. That's why, that's why I want a clarification on. Okay, thanks.
Do you know? Does David have experience with the, with this Equality application now?
He does, yes.
So he's used it prior, you know, in a, in a prior life?
Yes.
And do we know, do we know? Prior life. That's how deep our assessor is rooted. Do we, do we know what the implementation and startup is, you know, to get this going once approved? I know there's, the revale is coming, but how quickly can we get this up and going?
I think December is what Dave said to me, Tony.
Yeah, my understanding, like I think I said last time, is there's no time crunch here. We're definitely on schedule. And he's well aware of the timelines for getting things going.
Okay. Good.
Any other questions on, on the specifics of this from the Alderman?
I, yeah, what's the, the price difference between?
But there's a, there's a five thousand dollar price differential between the two of them, but, you know, according to Dave, that, that doesn't, that, that's not going to matter in the long run when you're going to be saving a lot more money or bringing in a lot more money with the, with the company that he's recommending.
Yeah, Chicago, if we, if we save five thousand dollars and we're getting crappy data, you know, we're
Yeah, no, no.
We're behind as it is. So that's, that's a, you know, money well spent kind of thing. And you generally get what you pay for.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I was just, I was just asking. I just wanted to mess with, you know, Sheila a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Josh, if there's no more questions, I'd like to make the motion to accept this, this bid and to, you know, close this contract.
A motion to accept the Quality Valuation Services bid by Alderman Mamon. Do we have a second? Rivers, all in favor? Me opposed? Abstentions? Our motion passes unanimously. Go get them. Thank you. All right, see. Old business. Do we have any old business to drudge up? Anyone? It's not old business, but I just want to mention that there was consideration given to canceling the August meeting because of, you know, vacations and because it's the end of summer and whatnot. But I just want to say, you know, as you can see, there's a lot of business to be done. A lot of important things to be discussed and approved and hopefully, and I just want to say thank you to all the Aldermen and to the staff and everything for, for being around and participating and for your work, you know, so.
Same to you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right, so that is it. We have one item in executive session, Blight Lane RE ten Bellevue Terrace. I'm assuming we need
That's going to be really quick.
I'm assuming we need Ron and City Staff, correct? And all the Aldermen? John?
That's right.
All right.
You need a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session. Come on, somebody. Motion by Yaman, second by Chicago. Let's go. Hit it. Room one.
Diane.
Diane, where are you?
Somebody grab Diane's hand, make sure she gets there.
Good night.
Everybody.
Hi, everybody.
Hey, Josh.
Yes.
Where's Charlie supposed to go?
It's the invitation coming up, Deirdre.
Okay. I'm in bed, so.
We're gonna take it to another dimension, very briefly.
Oh, good. Very briefly, thank you. I'll meet him back.
Meeting.